Technology glitches. We've had a lot of internet problems out here in the last week. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we can see you.
Yeah, we can start.
How's everybody doing?
I'm in there.
Good.
Good. All right.
You're good to start Nora.
Okay, the only thing I could not find in all the emails I had was the agenda.
Oh, we can put it up on the screen if that's easier.
All right, just I got the Chestnut Street, I have the memo, I have the proposed construction easement. The only thing I found the minutes, oh wait, you know what, I think Brian went into. Oh, here it is. Sorry. I just spam. All right.
Steve, if Nora's got them, could we?
Yeah, I have them. I have them in front of me, sorry.
Okay, I have it up on the screen and hopefully you guys can see it.
We can't see everybody and you don't necessarily know who's talking, but.
Who would use Steve?
Yeah, you could, there's a way you can. The agenda plus also see the thumbnails from some of the folks.
It's just, yeah, it's just the sizing. It's okay, I'll deal with it.
Yeah, and I can get rid of this too, because if you see, I mean, there's only a couple of items, so it's easy to move through it fairly quickly.
All right, so we want to call to order. Who's going to do the roll call?
I can do that. And I'm going to do it off memory at the moment, so Ms. King.
Here.
Ms. Peniston.
Here.
Mr. Baxendale.
Yeah.
Mr. Muschak.
Here.
And Ms. Langgallis.
Here.
And if Steve Ferguson happens to pop in, just let me know and we can add him for the record.
He was coming, right?
I believe so.
Okay. Just for the record, I just wanted to tell everybody I talked to Fran last night on the phone and she sounded. Tired, but she sounded in good spirits, like on her way to recovery, so. That was good news. It was very good to hear her voice last night.
Good, thank you.
Um, all right, so we're going to start with the special appropriation for the Board of Education for the special capital appropriation of. One million, six hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars to complete the e-tablet computers for students and teachers. In grades K through eight. And we're going to hear the report and the recommendation. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, do you want me to start Steve or I'm not sure your normal process if you introduced it or you want us to just jump right in? I'm happy to jump right in.
That would be great, thanks.
Okay, well, I'd like to. Thank the members of the planning commission for having us tonight, I believe on at this meeting. We have, it looks like I saw Barbara Meyer Mitchell, who is the Chair of our Finance Committee and I'll. Ask if she has a few introductory words in a moment. I'll introduce the issue. We also have Ralph Alon Ceezy, who is our Chief of Technology and Partnerships and. Be able to speak, you know, at great depth in terms of the district's technology initiatives and what this is all about. So obviously, as you're aware, everyone's world has been, you know, completely upended as a result of. This pandemic and certainly the school system has been, you know, extremely challenged. In terms of providing ongoing education to our children in what is now really, you know. I think we're six or seven weeks at least into this. And it's, you know, obviously a major challenge and one that relies very much on technology to do it effectively and efficiently. The district had been moving over the last several years to. What we refer to as a one-on-one or one-to-one environment where we have one technology device for one student, but we were nowhere near. There at the point that this pandemic hit. It quickly became clear that we needed additional devices and Ralph can talk more about how we secured funding. For a number of those devices at a number of grade levels. But the appropriation that is before you really is to the last piece of this in order to. Bring the district to a full one-to-one environment. So the appropriation will fund at the youngest grade levels Dell. Lap units that are tablets plus have a keyboard that those students need and at the upper grades, we've rolled out Chromebooks. The appropriation. Consists of, I guess, about four or five separate elements. It includes, at this point, the appropriation includes 2,000 Chromebooks. Which have been rolled out at this point and 2,700 student Dell tablets with keyboards and then another 300. Dell laptops and tablets for teachers are also part of this request. So the, you know, the district. In order to both get through the final few weeks of the. School year needs the appropriation now. We also need it for summer school. We, you know, still are not certain what summer school will bring in terms of how much of summer school will be. Distance learning based and how much of it will be building based. So that's something that we're still waiting for further guidance from the state on. We do expect going into next school year, we are going to need to rely very heavily on this technology because we're expecting. Certainly in looking at what's happened in other countries that are ahead of us in this pandemic. There are a number of changes that we're likely going to need to implement to the way that we. Provide schooling for our children, so we may need to put fewer children in any classroom at any given time. That certainly has been one of the items that's been discussed, which might suggest, for instance, that we may need some kind of model that has. Part of our instruction being delivered. In classroom, in school buildings and part of it delivered remotely. We also, you know, have certainly taken to heart the. Guidance from health experts that there is a likelihood of an additional second wave, if you will, or. Additional waves of this pandemic until a vaccine is available and is widely administered and delivered. That we certainly need to be prepared that next school year is not going to look like our typical school year, so. For all of these reasons, moving to the one-on-one-to-one environment where we have enough devices for all of our children. As all of our suburban neighbors already had, by the way. You know, we think this is really, really critical, so I'd like to. I did see the Chair of our Finance Committee, Barbara Meyer Mitchell. I'd like to give her an opportunity to offer any comments she may have or if she wants to sort of sum up at the end, that's fine and. Then ask Ralph to kind of fill in and answer questions.
I wouldn't mind having a moment just to address the rationale behind this specific request in terms of curriculum delivery as. Tom touched on, we are looking at multiple different possible models that will be informed by the research that comes in from. All around the world as to what will be safest for our students and our staff. But one of the challenges, you know, when we pivoted so quickly to distance learning. The K2 reliance on packets was very challenging because it. It's costly to produce them. It's difficult to get them out in a timely manner. We had mailing difficulties and they're inflexible to differentiation to the needs of a student. So these devices and also there are devices for some of our special education students who have specific needs. These are to be able to differentiate and meet students where they are in their learning process and not. Do a one-size-fits-all approach to education, which is never the way to go. So we appreciate your consideration of this request. The Board of Education is proud of the way that we pivoted quickly to an entirely new model and the phased approach. With a STEM approach, a design. Design mindset of improving every two weeks on the model. And now we have the opportunity over the summer to plan for what the fall may hold. And this is a critical tool for our staff to be able to be flexible in our response.
Um, I have a couple of questions. I am one of the parents that have the second grader that learned off of these packets and I have to tell you in the. Top 10 experiences of my life, the packet education has been one of the worst experiences I've had in my life.
You're lucky.
It really has been. Pretty much my daughter has learned nothing this last four months, so everything has been offline or other sources or whatever. It's not even just the fact that there weren't tablets, but it was also there is no curriculum. So I think I'm, I've been pushing for, I mean, I'm shocked that we didn't get tablets right from the beginning, to be honest with you, so. Tablets, Google, Chromebooks, whatever it is you want to call them, but you know, I talked to Dr. Adamowski and. You can't be asking these teachers to be going out and making videos and doing this and pulling it together and using Google Classroom. Google Classroom doesn't work any better for second graders either, like you have to have some sort of software and some sort of curriculum. And I don't know where that all fits into the equation, but. That's going to be another revenue source and can we kind of like maybe coordinate that so we're not doing it at the last minute and after the fact as well? Dr. Adamowski mentioned some software to me and I can't remember what it was off the top of my head, but it's actually like curriculum-based. Tom, has that been factored into an upcoming budget? What is going on with all of that?
Yeah, I think Ralph probably is best. I know that Brenda Myers has also worked on this, but Ralph, you probably are of everyone here on the call, you have probably the best information perhaps.
Sure, no, definitely, and yeah, we, like I said, let me kind of backtrack a little bit because. First of all, I probably shouldn't talk too much about the overall project because I think, you know, Barbara and Tom. I was really impressed with how detailed you got into and really understanding where we're going with our distance learning initiative, so you did a wonderful job of explaining it. Just a couple of things around the K2 piece, because that really is the biggest change that we're seeing right now and obviously where the biggest amount of funding is needed. We realize that, you know, as we started moving forward that there was a rationale, just so you know, on what device we also picked. So we picked a tablet device that has a keyboard. The purpose for that is that we know that at the K2 level, students want to be able to, they need to be able to work off the tablet at times. But knowing that we're going into the situation that we are, it's not just a student, it's the parents working with the students at that age level that's so critical. So making sure there was a keyboard that they could work with as well was really essential that we made sure that we made a device that would work for, you know. Integrating the, how the student could work at home as well as in the school. I guess there was a lot of thought put behind that.
Well, Ralph, moving forward, I mean, I. I want to make sure whatever we're investing in, we're doing well. You know, parents are going to be going back to work. And parents are not going to be able to sit there through their K through second-year-old and deliver distance learning because they're going to have to be paying for the mortgage. They're going to have to be putting their lights on, paying for the car payment, putting food on the table. So whatever equipment we're spending 1.6, it's like all this other stuff has to tie in and go with it because you can't just throw the Chromebook at them and not have. The content, the instruction, and if people are thinking it's going to be the parents sitting next to them. That's not going to work.
We want to make sure, Nora, I think what we want to make sure, I'm not expecting that the parents sitting next to them at all times. We want to make sure that there's actually a device that that can work that way, so that as a parent's working with their child on anything, whether they're reading a book. That they have the ability to have that accessibility, so we just knew that we wanted to pick a device that was flexible. With that though, there are pieces of curriculum that we are also implementing. You know, you've mentioned our learning management system, which is Google Classroom, where information's posted and. It's really used as a communications and a collaboration toward students. We use video conferencing, that's Google Meet is the one that we're really moving forward with as much as possible. There's also video content and curriculum that we receive from a variety of different providers. We're also doing, using a delivery mechanism called NearPod, where there's actually lessons that are developed and are interactive. That can be included with formative assessments can be included within there. I have a feeling though that Dr. Adamowski was probably mentioning a tool called Seesaw or Flipgrid.
Seesaw, it was Seesaw.
So both Seesaw and Flipgrid are, they're both equivalent, we use both of them. What they do is they allow the student to be able to, at home, teacher be able to record a video. Be able to send it to all the students and allow the students to be able to do some kind of performance-based assessment, so they can either show their work. Or they could do something else and record a small video showing what they've actually learned back, so it's another one of those communication devices. To be able to kind of integrate within the classroom and then be able to categorize what you're learning, so hopefully that that kind of explains a little bit what Seesaw is.
So is the money been budgeted for all of that stuff or are we just buying these computers and what's going on those computers when they're?
No, no, we're just, we're actually expanding the curriculum, the online curriculum opportunities that we have within the students, so some of them. We actually already own and we're just enhancing them and actually blowing them out to be able to be full-fledged, to be able to be used in both instances. In other cases, things like Seesaw and things like Flipgrid, others, we are including that in our budget.
Okay, so it's not, it's, so I just want to understand something because. I mean, the technology is there, but so if this has to move to actually like. You know, the poor teacher not going and having to like create the video and then post the video and then the kid is going here and they're going there and they're going there and they're going there. Is there like a thought-out curriculum program that's kind of going in here or, I mean, I saw Flipgrid, I wasn't very impressed with Flipgrid, to be honest with you. So I'm just, I just want to understand what.
I think it's actually the model of teaching that's going to change, so we are using, we are using online curriculum tools, okay? So, and we are including those, but part of the other big piece, and this is comprehensively, we're changing the way we look at the way that we teach. So, you know, people are talking about the new normal, this is really the next normal.
Don't say that to me, Ralph, I'll have a heart attack, okay?
One of the things that we're doing encompassing that that's also part of this process is a professional development plan that'll be delivered to teachers as well to also offer additional support. I can say right now that I'm launching a new website, that's a digital learning website. There'll be weekly classes there for teachers to learn about the different tools that are available when they have questions. My staff, meaning my library media specialist and others, will also be working on virtual office hours there to be able to offer additional online help. And I'm doing this in conjunction, the curriculum department, specifically Tina Henkel's doing a lot of work on our STEM coordinator. On developing the curriculum tools that are going to be available there as well, so we actually will have an online place for teachers to go. To be able to sign up for courses on a weekly basis and actually learn a little bit more about Google Classroom, so they may have a specific question and if that comes up. We can actually start to offer those types of tutorials on a regular basis, those are recorded and then they're actually allowed for teachers to go back to, so. It becomes an ongoing professional development site and really it's, we're trying to make sure that teachers get the PD that they need to be able to deliver instruction in this manner. It came at us pretty quickly, you know, we've got to say though, I'm so impressed with the teachers and what they've been able to do. And if we didn't do a lot of, you know, kudos to them because over the last four or five years, if we haven't done what we've been doing with online learning. And even that small hybrid model, they wouldn't have been able to spin and be able to make this fully. What they've been able to do and actually be able to implement a lot of what they've done, so, you know, they really have actually done a remarkable job. That doesn't mean that there's more work that we all have to do in this area and I think that's what we're trying to build out for. We definitely need the infrastructure though to be able to deliver that type of. That type of an environment for our students and for our teachers in order to do that, that's why we need the. The request that we're making right now for these machines so that we can make sure that the infrastructure's in place. We're working on the professional development and that'll have to just be a continual process. We are actually adding in our curriculum pieces so that, and then we're expanding the ones that we have to their fullest extent, which is really what we want to do as well.
Okay, and then one other thing, so it looked like you're buying the base model computers, I mean, I bought my daughter. Or I should say Santa bought her Chromebook for Christmas and, you know, it was a base one and it's like, I kind of wish I, I didn't really honestly know that much about Chromebooks, I mean, I'm. So I went in that direction because of school and, you know, there's a lot of like little glitches and memory things and are we buying enough? Horsepower in these so that like they're not going to be obsolete in a year, a year and a half?
No, I mean, they, we will be having to look at refreshed models over about four-year, a four-year period of time, so it's not like they're going to last forever, but. These models, when we moved most of our curriculum, just so you know, to more of a cloud-based model, so it's not like they're running it off the computer. Which is one of the reasons why we also need to have this access. Another piece to this that's really important. That we've realized through this whole process is having internet access for students. So that's another thing that we've been working on and I know I mentioned this at the last BT meeting when we had a conversation, but. It's a shameless plug for one of our partners, which has been Altice. And they have been wonderful, they've actually taken our Chromebooks, they've taken the serial numbers and the MAC addresses to each one of those. And they've been able to connect us to public wifi for free through this process. We would never have been able to implement the way we were if it wasn't for that, we would never have been able to get enough hotspots to be able to cover things, so they really had, they came to bat and they really. Communicated. Ralph, have a question when you're done. When you're done, I have a question. Okay, that being said though, we want to make sure that, like I said, all of our tools are cloud-based. The computers that we're using will be able to access those effectively over the next three to four years.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Also, just piggyback really short. The, what Ralph touched on is something that the curriculum team spent a lot of time thinking about, which was. We needed an equitable model so that we could reach every student, no matter what their resources are. And at the time that we pivoted in March, there really was no way to get an internet to all of our students, especially the K3.
I don't know, they were announcing free internet at the very beginning, Barb, so I beg to differ over that, they, everyone was offering it, I mean. Okay, Cablevision was offering free internet.
The, the design of the model was to ensure that in those first phases, we could. Provide the same model, no matter what your demographic was, and that's what we're trying to roll out as we become more sophisticated in our approach.
Great. This question's.
After you finish, I have a question too.
All right, hello everyone, good evening, Ralph and Barbara, real quick, what are the other major cities doing similar to what we're looking to do now? Are we attaching ourselves to what some have tried and not worked or are we spearheading some new electronic initiatives? Is this something that you think that we should, we should have been ahead on or you think we're right on time with this? I mean, I want to say we're actually a little bit ahead of some other school systems in the way that we're actually approaching this. What's that? Similar to our size city? Yes. Yeah, I think, like I said, I don't think we're doing anything on the cutting edge, we're just actually filling in and doing what we need to be doing. So we're filling the gaps of where we realized that we needed them, so a lot of the, like the technology that we're using is not cutting-edge technology, as Nora mentioned, it's not. It's not, we're not buying like, you know, $2,000 machines for each one of the students, we're buying what they need so that they can actually, you know, complete the work that they're doing as well as our teachers.
I saw what Walton's doing and I actually physically saw what McKinnon is doing and they're doing some pretty progressive stuff. Walton's using that Seesaw.
So I just wanted to, I wanted to thank Nora for her questions about asking about curriculum, et cetera, but also Ralph, I want to congratulate you and your team for being so thoughtful. And also Barbara, I think you're absolutely right that the only way that we can do this is we've got to go across the board doing one-to-one or it's not equitable and that's the only right way to do it. And the experience for teachers, if they don't have, they're not able to engage all the kids, then we're not giving an equal education across the way. I think I had a couple of logistical questions, so it's just to understand, not to question the planning, because I know you all have thought about this very carefully. I did some quick math and did I calculate correctly that there are about 7,000 computers of some or tablets being bought to cover the K through six plus? I just added up real quick and it looked like it was about 7,000 units. Does that sound about right?
That does sound about right, yep.
Okay, and then I guess my question is, what's always a concern is, I don't think there is a choice, you've got to get the equipment out. But my two questions or my three questions are, one. What happens if a student leaves the district or something, or what's the ability to get back equipment and is it even worthwhile? Two, if there are problems with the equipment, how do families get support so it works? And I, the other is really just a comment, which is. Based on what I'm reading about how school systems are planning, I think it would be foolish for us not to make this investment, given that. It is highly likely we will have periods where kids can't go to school or there's going to be influx and for us not to be prepared, I think is really a disservice both to the students and to the teachers. And so I also applaud you for thinking through about the teachers getting appropriately trained and supported. But I would like to understand about, are we really covering everybody we need to? And in terms of this huge investment, where are the pitfalls in terms of losing equipment or having equipment that doesn't work in the home?
Okay, great, and if I can just finish answering one thing for Steve too, you know, in looking at our comparison. I'm going to put on a different hat for a moment, so I'm also, I'm an adjunct professor at Fairfield U. And this semester I was teaching a capstone course in educational technology, so it's the final course to finish your educational technology degree. I had students from around the state that were in my class, all of them halfway through the semester, we decided to change the capstone to focus because all of them were in positions where they were supporting their districts. And this is Fairfield, Weston, up the line in Westfield, I mean, there was, there was about 12 students in the class. They were all supporting their districts in different ways, so we actually turned the capstone experience into how are you supporting them through the use of educational technology? And that was actually the presentation at the end of the semester. Looking at what they were doing, I mean, a lot of them were very creative and stuff, but we were, like I said, our teachers are on par or in many cases. Moving ahead of where I saw some of our counterparts, I mean, I was just actually really impressed, so they really do, but now having these tools. Which is something that some of the more. I want to say affluent, but some other districts would potentially have that caused the equity issue was what was causing us to be able to not get to that point. It's not, it's not the quality of the teachers that we have to be able to make it happen. Now that we have it in place, we're looking at scaling out the professional development model and just increasing and just getting better at what we do. So hopefully that kind of answers where we're at, so. Yeah, it does, we have, we have four Chromebooks on our dining room table during the day. The issue we have is chargers, I have my daughter sharing a charger with my son, they go back and forth, they fight over the charger. But the question I also have is, so after the next year, is it the thought that my daughter and son had that the Chromebook stays with them each year? Because I realize that there is a balance due for each of the children. Yes. With their student number. The new, the new plan will be, it's like students will probably have a refresh cycle three times in their career in the K12 environment. They'll get one in kindergarten, one around fifth grade and then one in ninth grade. And so that's, that's where you'll see that that four-year cycle going through the process of actually then, and at that point though, they'll actually need a new device after about four years.
Steve, I have a question, I mean, hopefully distance learning is not our future. But, I mean, my daughter was given a Chromebook in the beginning of second grade, which she didn't get to bring home, that was actually bumped up to one of the other grades, so she started, they. They were using, we're waiting sort of as a guinea pig to roll out some. Early testing, which was kind of honestly a little bit of a disaster, but it was all. I personally think K first and second is very young to have these kids on electronic devices, I really don't think it's probably good for them. So when the kids go into kindergarten, I mean. So when the kids go into kindergarten, I mean, how much use are those things going to get? I mean, I'm like hoping they're not going to be on those computers all the time.
No, and that was never, that was truly never the goal. I mean, to have especially the younger ones on computers all the time. But they have a different way of interacting with the computers, which is why we need touchscreens for them. We we don't plan on having the students on the computers all the time, but they they do need to be able to kind of become those those digital citizens from a younger grade level. They do they do need to have that experience. So don't, I wouldn't imagine any of our kids, K-12, are on a computer all the time. That is just not the way that we want to teach. And that's really, we want to be able to use it as a tool. If technology is used correctly and integrated correctly, the best way that I can kind of explain this is that if we think of the writing process, right, when students learn to write, you don't pay attention to the fact that they have a pencil and a paper in front of them. You look at the writing. So our goal is, in time with technology, that it's just so integrated and it just becomes like another thing that they use to learn. So at the younger grade levels, you probably won't see it as much, but it almost becomes invisible if it's really used correctly. So that then it just, you you don't pay attention to the computer, you pay attention to the fact that the student's developing a project that they're doing on that computer with other students or doing the research that they need.
But nobody can type, like all these kids can't type. There's no typing curriculum.
But Nora, I was going to just say, in terms of the interaction, it isn't just curriculum or typing, it's also the interaction with the teacher if the kids can't be in the classroom.
Well, that's not really happening a lot. I mean, the teachers are doing video. I mean, there's very little interaction with the teachers and the students. I mean, it's getting a little bit better, but you know, at the beginning with my son, there was none. And then, you know, with my daughter, there's it's just not there, but the typing, though, like, I mean, a lot of these kids can't type. Like, I I listen to the kids in the classroom with my son and like, they don't know how to type. So like, is your, are we going to be teaching any of them?
Last year, we adopted a digital curriculum that included typing. It's called learning.com and it is meant to be rolling out starting this year. And of course, it has been interrupted, but actually typing is part of the curriculum and has been for a year.
Yeah, and we we actually have rolled out, Barbara, at the next curriculum committee, I'll be showing you guys some data of how far we've gotten with actually the adaptive typing piece as well.
Great. Then I want to talk to you offline about that. Is that something the kids could do over the summer so they can learn how to type?
I think that we need to touch base with Ralph, but I think probably so. Yep, I think it's available on their Chromebooks at any time.
Ralph, I didn't get my, I didn't get my questions answered about the infrastructure, but I just also want to say the interaction with the computer, we should not think of is just typing or even formal curriculum. There will be times when you cannot have interactions other than through technology. And if we're not prepared to deal with times when teachers and students can't be together, I think we're being foolish by not creating the tools to do that. I think a lot of the students are highly dependent on these interactions. I do not think that we should minimize them. I also think that it creates relationships with the families. So I think that while we're asking a lot of good questions, I think it goes beyond the traditional ways that we think about education. But we're making a big investment and I wanted to know what are the contingency plans about loss, damage, and support?
Yeah, so with, let me let me kind of backtrack then for that a little bit. So loss, damage, and support, Mary, when when we're support, like I said, with these machines, we've actually got security measures put in place. You know, we can shut them down. If the machine, we do have a lot of older, like I said, the older Chromebooks are things that we're not as concerned about, but all these new devices, we we plan to make sure that there's actually a four-year lifecycle for them. They're being purchased with a warranty that's actually going to cover that timeframe. So for for anything that is we need to, we actually have a four-year warranty along with these with the Dell devices that we're receiving. We have our regular staff that normally works on this. As we've moved to this new model, though, Mary, we've actually developed what we call a tech depot. Because the buildings have been closed and we know that we would have that that type of a model moving forward where parents can go to. It's currently located and it runs a couple of days a week at the old Briggs building, where if there's a problem that a parent has with the machine, we have a process where they just contact the teacher, the the principal. There's a ticket that's given to them so that they can come down and get a replacement. And right now, we're doing them just as replacements because we don't, we we don't want to touch the machines that are kind of coming back in just for the safety of the staff as well. So we're actually swapping them out. And then once they sit there for a period of time, we go back, cleanse them, and then see what the issue is. So we do have a process to be able to make sure that we're we're supporting the the home version of this. And it's it's a depot model where parents can come to. But we do have it right now scheduled just to make sure that we keep people safe.
So I guess what I'm also trying to get a sense is of how did you arrive at the number of approximately 7,000? And does there build a cushion in there for loss, damage, or whatever? That you can replace it? And what do you do when a student leaves the district or something like that? I just it's it's a fairly big investment and I just was wondering how you all had thought about those pieces.
Yeah, so we do, we do have a small amount of a contingency in there. It's not a large one. But I would say, you know, for those 2,700 machines, we are going to be implementing probably 2,600 right now is the estimate, I think. So we have a couple of extra machines. No, actually, a little more than that. I take that back. It's it's less than 100 that we'll actually have, but we will have a few spares. Knowing that we would need spares while we send out the ones back to Dell if they were needed, but it is it is a small amount. We're trying to be as, you know, fiscally trying to make sure we're not spending any more than we need to. We would handle our, basically, we've actually been doing a one-to-one program at the high schools with Chromebooks. We started it a few years ago. So we've developed a way of knowing that if a student's leaving, you know, we we make sure that we get the we get the devices back. If we're closed down for a long extended period of time, yeah, there may, to be honest, there may be a problem, like if someone just decided to leave town and we didn't know. But that machine would be, we could brick them, well, it's called Brick the Machine. We can stop it from working. There's other things that would happen in order to be able to know that, you know, it would wouldn't be of use to to anybody leaving. But but just like anything else, I mean, I think we've we've covered it as much as we can to make sure that we actually have a process in place. But we haven't, our our experience has been at the high school level, there really have not, there's not been, actually, there hasn't been a lot of damage either. So as soon as we assigned a Chromebook to a student, we found out that the damage decreased quite a bit because they knew it was theirs to be able to deal with.
And one Sorry.
Yeah. Secondly, we also found out that as they were leaving, we knew that just like collecting a textbook or collecting anything else, we wanted to make sure we kind of picked up that device.
And then I just want to follow up on a question that Nora raised, which is, I know this is the major capital investment. But is there anything related to this plan that we should expect to see any other requests for capital budget? Because if we're if doing software or anything like that, are there any other expenses that we'll see down the pike? Will come to that capital budget budget rather than an operating budget?
Yeah, so capital would not be able to cover. Software would have to be an operating budget.
Okay.
Uh, question, question real quick. How about the chargers? And I say that because I have, I have some, I have three, three listeners on three, the kids are listening like, hey, how about the chargers? So as far as hardware stuff, is it like, do you go pick something up? Because we've been buying them on our own. Is is that is that will be a common expense, you think? Have you guys accounted for that or is that just?
So it may, it may be in time. I mean, ideally, what we do, Steve, is we actually have extra chargers at school when the kids are using the one-to-one program so that they can plug in if they forgot to charge it at night. But we would expect the students to be able to hold on to it, hold on to their own chargers and stuff. For the most part, though, we're not losing them. It's just a question, you may need a couple of extras at times because of the amount of computers.
I see, I see. Well, that answers the question.
Doesn't every laptop or Chromebook or whatever come with
Charger, yes.
own charger?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, wow.
We do have some spares. I shouldn't say that. I mean, it's like we do keep some spares, but not a, not a tremendous amount of them. In school, the model we've used up to now, though, we do have extra chargers throughout the building so that they can actually charge their machine if they did forget to charge it.
I I have two, I have two, I have two questions to kind of tag onto what Mary was saying. The first one is, you know, we've been doing all that food delivery to the students. So my my kids and I do Mondays and when we deliver the food, we've had a lot of shifts because the people are gone. Like, they've just left. They've moved out of their house. They've, you know, so if they have those laptops, if they just decide to leave, how, I mean, just by putting a brick or canceling it, it's not going to necessarily get them back.
Yeah, no, understood, definitely. But as students have been moving around, our transancy, we see the transancy within the district too, so. I mean, it's something that we track within Power School when 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 people are moving from place to place as well, so.
So you don't think some of them are saying they're just gone? They just left, disappeared?
It's, like I said, I don't, we we haven't seen that from the standpoint of losing equipment. In the past, what I, what I, the experience I can tell you is from in the past, when we've actually run one-to-ones and we've sent equipment home, and it's not like the transancy wouldn't be there then as well. We we haven't been experiencing those those issues. So will we have them every once in a while? Yeah, there there will. But I mean, I think that's, I don't think it's going to be something that that we're thinking that's going to happen on a on a daily or or, you know, on a a large scale. I mean, it's going to be just like, it'll probably be about the same as we've found out that it's about the same as when you have a broken machine, you know. Yeah, so.
To piggyback Nora's comment, which is a really good question. Is there a way that we could track the timers on these computers, see if they're really being used? Is that is that a capability or am I going too much in the weeds? Because if it's not being used after a walk, we have them bring it back and have someone else use it? Or is there a way to track the usage of these devices or that's something that a teacher would do?
Well, so I I think that 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 kind of digs into an area that so the answer is yes, I can actually track when they're on certain applications. Okay, on any of these machines. And we actually use that data to figure out whether or not it makes sense to continually buy the new software. So it's like if we're seeing that we've paid for a piece of software that's not being used, why are why are we spending the money on that? We really need to revisit. Is it being, is it, does it make sense with our curriculum and so forth? So we can look at that, but the the question that we're really, you know, we're looking at right now is we're going to be using these tools while they're in school as well as when they're home potentially. So when they're in school on a regular basis, some teachers are going to use the devices much more than others because of just their their curriculum and how they work. When they're home, yeah, you're, we can already tell you that's like, if you look at my Google Classroom data, it's like, it's it's through the roof since March. Because everybody's home on it all the time, whereas in the past, a teacher would use Google Classroom, but they'd only use it for a very small portion of time because they'd still be face-to-face with the student as well. So we can track that data to look at it, but I don't know if that's necessarily the data to say that just because they're not using it at that time, it it makes sense that they wouldn't, they're not benefiting from it for what what's what's being needed.
Understood. Yeah. That is my question. Thank you.
So Nora, whenever you're, whenever discussion's finished, I'm willing to move the the issue forward.
Just one more quick question. So we're, the the tech support thing, like you said, your office was handling it. We, I, you know, we have our own and we had some issues like with Zoom, with the teacher stuff and you know, one of the frustrating things was that if I got an email from the teacher, I couldn't forward it to Addison because she's in second grade and the email wouldn't forward. And then the teacher was playing the tech support person and we didn't have anybody to call and so who, who's going to be providing all that kind of tech support for all this equipment?
So imagine, and and I should say, it looks a little different when you're home, if we're in a situation where we're home. So let's just say we get closed down again next year in October. The way that that support will look, and when I say the tech support that I was talking about at Briggs, that's actually the tech support for the hardware to make sure everything's working. What we're also putting into place on that website that I mentioned are those online office hours. So for our specialists that really work, like our library media specialists and our digital literacy teachers, they're the ones that will be able to help support the teachers, the students, and that's where a teacher would go into because we do realize that there's some of those gaps where you're talking about a software support issue, not not necessarily a hardware support issue.
Right, right, okay.
We're building that up and we've actually developed a new site where those first office online hours will be starting next week. So we actually have a number of them. It's not all day. It's like, you know, an hour a day where a teacher can call in. And it's actually, it's similar to a Zoom meeting. We're doing it using Microsoft Teams. They can log on and then they can actually talk to somebody to try and help them develop, you know, come up with an answer. And if they don't come up with that answer, then we would actually pass it on to the next person and it would be the first level one support. But it's our teachers doing that support now.
And that's asking a lot. I mean, they, I don't think a teacher should be the tech support, but I mean, that's a lot of new computers at a big number that we're putting forward and probably the younger they are, the less, the more help they're going to need, so.
But if the teachers, if the teachers don't understand the software that's being used, you know, and these are, once again, these are our our teachers that are actually focused around integrating technology that that are the ones that are helping with.
But you know, we only have teachers for so many hours based on the union. You want them teaching. You don't want them being tech support, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm, this isn't during this regular school day. So we also have the other piece of our model that we're changing is we have what are called tech coaches. These are teachers that receive a stipend to be able to help support certain initiatives. So maybe Google Classroom and maybe ClassLink, whatever it may be. Part of, part of the model coming into next year is that they offer one hour of tech support for their own building next year. So that's, like I said, we're trying to, we're trying to build it in that our staff is developing that capacity over time, which is really what we should be doing.
All right. And the last question is, this is enough? You don't need any more than this? Is this going to be enough?
This is enough to get the plan moving forward. I mean, once again, we're we're going to be looking at a much more comprehensive plan over the next two to three years. Because as I mentioned, there's a, there's a life cycle and you've got a chance after like every three, every four years, you're going to have to really look at some replacements. So there will have to be a sustainability model that's going to be put into place. What that looks like right now, we'll be able to kind of help build out at, you know, over the next year so that then we can you know, approach, approach the city and Board of Ed to be able to, you know, approve the model that would actually make the most sense.
Was it, was that number cut out of your budget this year? After, I know we didn't cut it out of your budget, but did it get cut out of your budget when it left the Planning Commission?
Yeah, uh, yes, it's not in my budget anymore, but we're actually, you're you're filling the gap at the moment. Once again, what that number is going to have to look like in 21, 22, those are the kinds of things that we're going to really need to look at, how that model is going to look moving forward, knowing that.
It just concerns me because if we're making all this investment in the technology every year, the city is going to have to know that they're going to have to, this is a continuous thing. You shouldn't have to beg for it every year.
Yeah, I did want to, I wanted to make that point as well, that you know, although I think this sets us up in a pretty decent spot for this year. Certainly, as Ralph indicated, there will be a need to refresh these units, you know, they're they're not going to last 15 or 20 years. It is going to be something that will need to be refreshed in in the future, so.
I just know every four years, it's been this thing on the Planning Commission and every four years, we've always supported it and then it somehow goes somewhere else and the refresh never happens, so.
So Nora, I would just suggest that one of the things to help with that is, it would be great, maybe in the fall, to have some kind of report back about the impact this investment is having on teaching and how many students are actually
Yeah.
if we have another incident of people having to be at home, so.
Mary, who would be the person to report that? Mary? Who would be the person to report that? Who would be the person to report that? Somebody on the curriculum side of it?
I would love to
That's more of an operating.
on that. I had a great conversation with our new superintendent, he'll be starting July 1st, Dr. Alexandra Ostraya. And she and I discussed end-of-year reporting structures already for this year and going further in the future. We have a good idea of of how to be as transparent as possible and going beyond just reporting that to the mayor, but the council and the BET and the Planning Commission so that everybody knows and can celebrate the advancements that we've made in education in our city.
Thank you, Barbara.
So is everybody okay? Does anybody have any questions? Do we want to?
I'd like to move, I'd like to move the resolution.
Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to second it.
All right, um, so wait, where is that resolution?
See, I think if you scroll down, it should be there.
At the end of the agenda?
It should be under the, it should be after.
It should be under the, it should be after the, the Henry's letter.
Oh, at the end of Henry's memo? Okay, hold on.
You want to use it?
Okay, here, I have it, I have it, I have it, I see it. So the resolution is to, um, does, who, who's going to second to move, or do you want me to read it first? Steve?
I've got it in front of me, I've seconded it.
Okay. Resolution is to approve the special capital appropriations totaling 1,642,470 to increase the available funds in Board of Education Capital Project Number 09-205-010-CO112. Instructions.
I think you're reading the wrong resolution. On the screen, you should see.
Wrong one.
You should see the, uh.
Should be on the screen, Nora. Scroll over. Be resolved.
I don't see it.
Just the one Brian sent.
Which, where's, where's the, where's the resolution that I, I'm looking at what Brian sent me, I, that's the only one I see.
Yeah, that was, that was the memo from Henry, I think. And then underneath that, there should be the planning commission's resolution.
I can read it if you like, if it expedites the matter.
Sure, go ahead.
Sure. Be it resolved by the Norwalk Planning Commission that the special capital appropriation request made by the city's Board of Education for the funding of 1.642 million dollars, excuse me, 1.642,470 to provide e-tablet computers for students and teachers in grades K through eight. Be approved, subject to the following reasons. One, to implement the Plan of Conservation and Development Goal to make Norwalk's public school system the most successful city school system in Connecticut with students exceeding state average achievement and high need students making the smallest, having, excuse me, having the smallest achievement gap. Number two, to implement the Plan of Conservation and Development Policy to continue to support the NPS Strategic Plan to Improve System Performance. Be it resolved, the notice of this action be forwarded to the common council.
So we, we changed it from K through three to K through eight?
Correct.
Okay. Do you want to take a vote?
But the dollar amount was increased also. We, we gave the schools 400,000 earlier in the year. And that was for, uh, five through eight. And then they came back and asked for 1.2 million more for K through three. That's how we got 1.6 million for K through eight.
Okay, but every K through three is going to have a computer with this. So somebody want to?
I moved, I moved the resolution, Mary.
And I seconded it.
Okay.
Probably should do a roll call vote, I think, at this point.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me take off the screenshot one second.
Thank you.
That way I know who's on. Okay, I'm going to go by the names I'm just listing in no particular order. Uh, Mr. Baxendale?
Yes.
So this, yes, just to clarify, in favor of the motion, Ms. Penniston?
In favor of the motion.
Ms. Penniston?
In favor of the motion.
Mr. Ferguson?
In favor.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes, in favor.
Ms. Lane Gallus?
Yes.
And I think I got everybody, correct?
Yep.
Okay, carries unanimously.
Thank you, thank you, Ralph. I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thanks, everyone.
I'm going to jump off.
Thank you, everybody. We really do appreciate it.
Steve, I like the beard.
First time, first time for everything.
I know, I like the beard too.
It's my wife's idea.
Both of you guys, um.
It's my wife's idea.
All right, so now we're going to move to the discussion of other items. We are going to have an update on the Norwalk River Valley.
No, I think you're looking at the, an old one. We had to add the 824 for Monroe Street.
Okay.
That was the one that got sent out today. I'll pop that back up on my screen.
No, I don't want, I, I have all my emails here, so when did you send that one over, Brian?
I'd have to look.
Okay, I, I had, I thought I had everything that you sent up, but.
It was probably on Monday, oh, yesterday. Um, I could resend it if you want.
No, no, I have, I have, uh.
Yeah, so there was a revised agenda that went out to add that item. We did that yesterday sometime during the day, I don't remember exactly what time. That was the one that Fran responded to in her email.
Right, right. Okay, so let's see, we're moving. Just give me a minute here, guys.
First and foremost, are we having a discussion or are we having to make a decision as well? For this 824?
I'm looking at the one you sent me today and I'm seeing the same 512 agenda.
If you can see the screen I have up there now, I have the item on the, on the screen. It's a discussion, discussion and/or decision. Uh, it's listed as 8-24 Referral Temporary Right of Entry and Access Agreement over 30 Monroe Street.
I, I see that, but I'm looking for the agenda because you said you changed the agenda. Where's the change in the agenda?
It's up on the screen.
For some reason, I can't move the screen, I'm not.
Reduce.
Green.
I have all my emails here from you. Did you send me the agenda or did Brian send me the agenda?
I believe Brian did.
Okay, I have everything here that Brian sent me. I have the referral, which is up on my screen, but I don't have the revised agenda. All right, just, I don't see it, so if you want to email it to me, I have my screen open right now, but I don't have the revised agenda.
Nora, just look at the big screen because Steve has it up on the big screen.
I can't see it.
Um, go to Galley.
Right corner of your, of Zoom and you'll be able to see it, like there's a little icon there.
I'm telling you, the little icon is not there, I can't see it.
Put your arrow.
Swipe right or something, swipe left, swipe right, I don't know.
Must be awaiting.
No, I can see it.
Did Brian say must be awaiting? I like that one.
Must be Nora.
Can I make a suggestion, Brian? Would you, if Brian has access to this, could he just email it to everybody right now and anybody that can't see it, open it?
Well, just read what it says.
Uh, Tammy, I, I hear what you're saying, but sometimes people have different screens when they're looking at Zoom.
No, no, I get that, but can we just read what the next item on the, is, so Nora, to help Nora?
I'll read it. Item three, discussion and/or decision. A 8-24 Referral Temporary Right of Entry and Access Agreement over 30 Monroe Street Report and Recommended Action. There we go.
Thank you, Steve.
The question is, are we going to have a discussion on this or are we going to make a decision?
Hopefully you're going to do both.
All right, then let's start. Uh, could we have someone start explaining this referral?
Absolutely, Jessica's here. Hey, it's Jessica Casey, Chief of Economic Community Developments, great to see everybody. Um, thank you very much for hearing, um, this review for a referral to the mayor to enter into a temporary right of entry. Um, there was some confusion with the changing of the meeting date, so I apologize that it came through so late, but we did. Do as soon as possible. So this is a project that, um, is occurring at the corner of Chestnut and Monroe over by the South Norwalk Transit Station. Um, it actually was filed in 2018 and it got zoning approval in November 2019. Um, what we're looking at here is a mixed-use building with 110,000 square feet of development, 106 apartments with ground for retail as well as tenant amenities. Um, and part of the, what we're asking for you to review and refer is, um, um, for the city to enter into a temporary right of, uh, access with the developer. And the reason for this is because they're going to be working on the foundation of the building at the corner of Chestnut and Monroe. And they will need to access some city property to be able to do some staging, but also, um, to be able to ensure that they can pour the foundation appropriately on that site. So the temporary right of access, which is not an easement, it's not a permanent easement. A permanent easement will come after this and we would come to you in a separate request for that. This is just the temporary right of access. Um, the term that we're looking at is a six-month term from the effective date. It can be terminated, um, effective upon 60 days written notice or upon 10 days advanced notice, um, from either party. So once the developer is done accessing city property for the foundation to be poured, um, they could write us a notice that indicates to us that they will be off of city property. The temporary right of access includes restoration clause and indemnification. It also includes insurance. Um, we've been working with DPW, the redevelopment agency, and legal to ensure that all of the clauses are captured in that agreement. And, um, one of the questions that did come up in the past is, are, is the city, uh, looking for compensation for the temporary right of access? And in this one particular case, we're not. We will be seeking compensation for a permanent easement. Um, but we will not be seeking, uh, we will not be seeking compensation because the, this is actually a right of entry or right of access, which is, um, temporary in nature for six months. So we didn't feel it necessary to be able to do that. This project is, um, when it went through the zoning commission, committed to approximately $300,000 in streetscape improvements, including lighting, sidewalks, um, trees, bike racks. We're thinking, um, we're, we have in mind that the building permit fee for this project is approximately $250,000. Um, and we know that the permanent easement will seek compensation. The city will see compensation for that. So again, this is just, uh, it's not permanent easement, it is a right of entry. It's to be able to support the developer and being able to pour the foundation and start construction this construction season. Um, the access point is on, uh, between Railway Place, which, uh, Railroad Place, which Steve is showing on his screen and the building, um, right now, there is a traffic barrier and there were trees that were planted and that's, that's where the staging would happen. We don't anticipate that there'll be, um, a lot of, we don't anticipate that there's going to be a lot of, um, disruption to the traffic. We would love to be able to help them get in there and get out, um, in the next number of months. While potentially traffic might be a little bit slower. Um, they will have safety barriers up between Railroad Place and the building where they're, uh, this building site where they're doing their work. But, um, but I think that captures most of, of what we're looking at here. We do have DPW on the line and we also have legal on the line as well, if there's any questions that pop up.
Uh, I'd like to make a comment.
Yep.
The, um, I signed one of these agreements for an adoptive spot at Exit 14. It was basically the same language. And everybody that, uh, signs up for an adoptive spot does the same thing. You have temporary, uh, access onto city property and then you, uh, you have to, uh, sign a form and it's, it's just basically a formality. I think this is, uh, very good timing because the train station is quiet for the most part. And, uh, this is an amazing improvement to, um, the TOD plan. Uh, it's been an integral part of it, it's right next to the train station. And I see this as a no-brainer, uh. I, I certainly support this and I think this is, uh, this is a great step forward.
I agree, Mike.
I just, I have a clarifying question. I'm sorry, I just have a clarifying question, was just wondering why it's being asked for now? Was it not foreseen that this was needed before?
So it was, um, I think that there was, to be perfectly honest, there was, um, there was some turnover in the city, there was also some turnover with the redevelopment agency. So some of the touchpoints for this particular developer, um, that got transitioned over the last number of months. Um, what we were thinking was that, um, we wanted to bring forward the right of entry and also the permanent easement, but as separate pieces. Um, we wanted to be able to work with the developer to be able to get in the ground as soon as possible. And we were working with timelines, um, not that they were putting forward, but we were, we're trying with the timelines to get in for this construction season. So we wanted to support them coming through the, um, the city's committees and commissions in, in the spring. Um, at one point in time, there was discussion that Railroad Place would become a public road, that it would be a right of way, but there are a few, um, not issues, but a few things that we would need to work through. One of which is the financing of who, of, of the cost to become a road. Um, the second is the width of the road, uh, the width of the entry from Railroad Place to Monroe is actually being revised, um, and reconfigured, uh, on the developer, the developers paying for that as part of the zoning commission approvals. Um, and so there, the other piece of that is that we're not really sure what that whole entire parcel will look like. So we're a little hesitant to push forward a road at this particular point because we don't want to have to, um, construct a, a road or a public roadway through that larger parcel and then we, and then have opportunities that come up down the road that don't configure properly with the road that we put in. So there was discussion about, um, creating a public right of way, a road. Um, we did deviate off of that and, um, as a result, we're coming in now to ask for the temporary right of entry and then the permanent easement at a later date.
And one other question, why was the decision made not to charge them for the temporary easement?
So the decision for the temporary easement was, um, that we would not seek compensation um, due to the investments that they were making through, um, other parts of the project, like the, um, $300,000 in streetscape improvements, the 250,000 through the, uh, building permit, which is an estimate. But in addition, um, that we would be working with them on a permanent easement and the permanent easement would be, um, would be, we would negotiate the permanent easement, but because of the temporary nature of this particular right of entry, we're looking at it as a license as opposed to an easement. So that was the decision not to seek compensation.
Thank you.
Jessica, I have a couple of questions, this is Tammy. Um, I, I drove around the block three times today and was sort of, um, perplexed as to why they need the easement coming in off of Railroad Place. At first I thought we had the address wrong because it said Henry Street and Chestnut Street. But the way you're talking about it, it's the other end of the property really at Monroe Street and Chestnut Street. There's a hill from Railroad Place down into that sort of triangular lot, right? And so I'm looking at the screen that Steve has up, it's that shaded area that looks a little, you know, brownish as opposed to the very black and white map, is that right?
Yep, that's correct.
Why can't they just come in from Monroe Street? Why do they need to come over the hill into the property?
Right, so I think it's a really great question, Tammy. So I think the, um, the trick of this is that they would come in off of Chestnut and it'll end up doing like 85% of the foundation work. But the, their property, basically a but city property. And so for them to be able to pour the foundation in that one corner is where they would need to be able to access. And I think Steve's cursor is sort of over in that area, but, um.
They might just park like a big cement mixer with one of those arms and reach in? Or are they going to wreck the side? I mean, I'm, I was sort of saddened to see that they've cut down every tree basically that used to be along there. It used to be very green, but neither here nor there.
Steve, if you want to show, can I show my screen?
Uh, yeah, one second. Brian, can you do that and I'll, I'll stop my share.
Yeah, you should be able to share, Jessica. Let me know if you can't.
Okay, so can you see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what you're looking at here is Railroad Place coming up from Monroe. So Tammy, what you're saying is that all of the trees were cut down, which they were, all the trees that were cut down beside the guardrail. But, uh, the building that you see with Sono and South Norwalk is the building that we're talking about, the 110,000 square feet of development with 106 apartments. So we need to be able to pour the foundation in up to the point where, um, the parking lot is between the building on the left and the building on the right. So to be able to access the corner of their lot, they've requested a right of entry so that they are able to construct that foundation. And they, we wanted to be able to do, give them the right of entry. One, for safety precautions so that they can construct the foundation, um, having access to the site. But second of all, if they do need to get any equipment up on Railroad Place, that they would be able to do that. And I think that what we're, you know, the question came up, well, what if we were to, what if we were to say, you know, the right of entry is impossible? Well, to your point, Tammy, I think that they would still be able to construct that corner foundation. But because of safety and because of access, we wanted to be able to request the right of entry so that they have the ability to get into that corner that you saw in the site plan, where basically their property abuts the city property.
Right, but okay. So, thank you for putting that other picture up on the screen of the plan. It's not only, it looks permanent because they're going to pull into that building, that garage underneath from railroad place.
So, they will request.
The picture back, Steve?
Yep, so they will request a permanent easement.
Well, then why, like, what, it feels like a little dance. They don't need to request the easement if we've already approved their plan to access the garage for that building from railroad place?
But we have yet.
Or am I missing something?
Yeah, we have yet to do that. So, we need to come through, we need to come through, we need to come through and take a permanent easement through the process. And the permanent easement would allow them to access what you're seeing, what you're talking about. But first and, and we talked about two ways of doing it. One way we talked about doing it was to bring forward the right of entry and the construction access along with the permanent easement, that we would bring them together through the process. The difference with the right of entry versus the permanent easement is that the permanent easement requires an appraisal. And we're going through, they're going through the appraisal process now for the permanent easement. To be able to support them getting in the ground this construction season, we had discussed with them that we would bring through the right of entry first so that they could access the site and begin the foundation work on the site, taking the risk on themselves. And that sec, while the appraisal was being completed, we would take that right of entry through the process. And once the appraisal was completed, then we would take through the permanent easement. So, it's really.
That seems convoluted to me, but maybe that's the way these things happen. I don't know.
It's really.
We got Darren in. We have Darren here to probably explain this. Hey, Darren.
Hey, how are you? I'm happy to answer any questions on it. So, the easement aspect is not only the valuation process, which, which is, you know, a process in and of itself and has been commenced. But transactionally, the easements have to be thought out and embedded and dealt with in a way that everyone's going to be happy with. And so, by bifurcating this small little piece of it to allow them to get construction started, it kind of allows the time to address the other issue. Now, they understand, fully apprised in fact, in assuming this commission approves the right of entry, it'll be a representation within the right of entry agreement that they understand that they're accepting the risk that they may never get the easements that, that, that they're looking for. But really, the only thing that's occurring here is, it's not, it's not an easement. Jessica's right. It's more like a license. If it was a public road, it would have been done by an encroachment permit, by, as a matter of right. And, you know, the reality is, is that they're not allowed to make any improvements on city property. It's simply so that, to the extent that they may have equipment that, you know, is, you know, when they're on that corner of a lot, is, crosses that line, they're not quote-unquote trespassing. And God forbid any injuries occur. The city has an indemnification insurance. So, it really is taking a very small piece of the puzzle out of it. The large, really, the nuts and bolts are the easements which are being dealt with in a separate process. So, there actually will be a temporary construction easement that they'll request that will be valued to, you know, to put the sidewalks in. They're hard to do by way of the zoning approval. They'll be a, they'll be requesting a non-exclusive ingress and egress easement because the road there is actually not a public road, but a driveway. So, we said, you know, it's not a public road. You've got to, you've got to have an easement over, over the driveway. In addition to, you know, the ramp that you're seeing on the rendering that Jessica provided, there's also contemplated at the, the opening of, I believe it's Monroe Street, where it turns on to thirty or outlets on to Monroe. There's a widening there, which also contemplates a separate easement that the city would need to acquire over, over the developer's land to provide a two-lane exit. So, there's multiple aspects of this, these easements downstream that require quite a bit of thought and deliberation and should not be rushed. And so, the way it was presented to me is, you know, you know, this was a way to allow at the developer's risk that they could, you know, commence construction in a safe way. You know, while these other issues would be better, the alternative would be that the project is delayed.
Well. A question, Darren. You mentioned, you mentioned that there was, we had an application earlier about additional parking. On Jessica's picture, the parking area is not on that, correct?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
There was some additional parking that they were looking for in conjunction with the railroad station. Jessica's pictures do not show that area, does it?
Jess probably can speak to that issue. The driveway, at least for this portion of development, from what I understand, the driveway goes into the second tier of their deck parking lot. So, it's a two-tier parking lot. And the second floor is accessed from thirty Monroe Street, assuming they were granted an easement. And the first floor is access from Chestnut Street.
So, maybe Steve could answer that question then. Steve, you know what I'm referring to, Steve? Steve?
Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, so, I'll back up just a little bit. If you, the picture you're looking at there, that building in the middle, that lower profile building, that's actually the first phase of a multi-phase development. That's eleven Chestnut.
Yeah, that's already erected already, though. That's already erected.
Right. And so, what happened is the, the development team has purchased this other parcel, actually should say parcels, to the left of that where the cursor is now. That's the second phase of this project. South of this area is a larger third phase and potentially other phases as well. And so, the parking is shared amongst these different uses. So, the middle building there has parking on, as you can see in the rendering, has parking on both sides. There's access to the new larger building from that building there. It's kind of right, yeah, right there. And then, there's also, that's, that's to a lower deck. So, and then if you're coming up railroad place, there's access to the upper parking deck. So, they split the parking decks. There's not like an internal circulation. There's a one-way, there's an entrance off of Monroe to get to the lower area and an entrance off of railroad place to get to the upper parking deck.
So, the question I had was regarding the other application regarding additional parking, that was towards Henry and Chestnut?
Further south, down the, down in the corner.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear. This is not to do with the recent application that we had before.
Yeah, yeah. So, this, what you're looking at tonight is just a temporary construction easement so they could park some equipment and machinery there to make it a little easier for them to construct their building.
But it has nothing to do, it has nothing to do with the.
The developer is assuming that they're going to get the permanent easement to make that garage entrance off of railroad place, whether it's a street or whether it's just a driveway for the train station. They are assuming that. Or has the city given them permission?
That's right. So, originally, the city was talking to, originally, we had explored creating that into a public right-of-way, a road. And if it was a road, then they would only need an encroachment permit. They wouldn't have to go through the permanent easement and they wouldn't have to go through the right, the permanent easement. Because the, because the land that you see by the train station is a parcel and not a public right-of-way, then we need to go through the right of entry for them to do the construction. And then we would need to go through the permanent easement for a long-term access point. The, Tammy, the property that you were talking about when you were saying you were driving around, that's the property that Steve was talking about as phase three, which is at the corner of Chestnut and Henry. So, I think that's, that's the piece that, that's the parcel that you were, that you were referring to earlier.
Yes, but I mean, the one at hand is the one at the top of, at Monroe and Chestnut.
That's correct. Yep.
You're talking about right now.
That's right.
That's what we're approving today. But the way the memo read, it was Henry and Chestnut, not Chestnut and Monroe.
Okay.
Jessica, I have a question. So, I've just been on like a lot of calls lately with investors, with Pricewaterhouse, with Appraisal Institute. I mean, everything to do with, you know, how we're all going to be appraising and what investors are going to be looking for in the next, I don't know, two to three years. And one of the things that they don't seem to be looking for is density. So, like, are these, are any of these guys thinking of like redoing anything, any kind of design? Putting more private balconies in, putting more, I mean, this whole concept of like where we were going for seems like a lot of people are like now backing away from it, including all the recalls I've been on.
Yeah, so I've, I've been reading as well. And I think that what I've read is that people are not interested in investing in buildings in, when we think about New York density, where there are seven thousand units per building. But the fact is, is that folks are looking to move out of New York and Fairfield County is a prime space for them to be looking. So, we anticipate that these types of buildings with this level of density that are directly adjacent to the train station will continue to be in high demand. Whereas those buildings that are seven thousand units, that are extreme-high skyscrapers in New York that are, you know, two hundred square feet units or three hundred square foot units, I don't, I think that that's where the investment is starting to lean away from.
See, I, from the calls I've been on, it's, it's both. It doesn't, I mean, even Warren Buffett said the other day, if you're not investing in single-family homes now, you're going to lose out. So, I mean, I was on a call with one of the biggest REITs the other day that does all the opportunity zones. And the call was not, I mean, it was concerning to me, more as an appraiser than this conversation. But I just thought maybe that they would be kind of looking at this to kind of like re-engineering it a little bit because they were all focused on buildings that are going to have like very flexible space underneath for more service-oriented, people that could do high deliveries, more stuff that you could go out the door on with curbside stuff, more units that had less shared space and more private balconies or private spots. So, I didn't know if like this was going to be coming with some of these projects. But you're saying, no, they're not revamping, relooking?
No, so we haven't seen that. So, of all the developers that we've been working with, we haven't seen that trend hit yet. So, we've seen advancement for phase two here and phase three here. We've seen advancement and excitement for one twenty-one, one twenty-three water. We've seen another couple of different ideas coming through. So, it's not something that I've seen. I don't know if Steve's seen something different from his office. Definitely not, not, not yet anyway, Nora, not what I've been hearing.
And they all have the financing for this, right? The financing is all there lined up. It's all good?
Yeah, they actually, they've actually obtained their building permits. And I've still seen, seeing interest in similar developments in several different parts of the city.
Good to know. The other thing is Fran wanted me to address a couple of things. Can I do that? Or she seemed a little concerned about the memo that was sent out. And she felt like everybody was trying to dumb it down for the planning commission. Did you see the memo?
You got the same memo that we offered to the Public Works Committee. So, the memo that we sent you with the site plan is exactly the same memo that we sent to the Works Committee for approval and referral to, to your commission. The, we do have a draft contract in place. And I walked through sort of the pieces of that in the sense of what the term is, how the, how the right of entry could be, could be, how each party could not have that, that agreement in place any longer, indemnification, insurance, all of the clauses that we would normally see. So, there's no, there was no intention of dumbing anything down. You've received what we gave to the Public Works Committee. And I apologize if that was the way in which it came across, but there was absolutely no intention of that. And there are a set of documents for everyone to be able to view in the same way.
Yeah, I felt so bad, Jessica. I was like, wow, dumbed it down. I was like, man, you know, like, wow. I thought he was all very, I thought he was all very clear, Jessica. I thought it was clear to me, but hey, you know, maybe I missed something.
Fran, last night, called me on the memo and she showed me the area. And she said, you know, she was, she was very upset over it. So, you know, she said that, you know, we don't need the simplest of explanations. She wants to know what the details are so she can make rational decisions. And she doesn't need anybody to sort of. So, we just wanted, she just wanted to make sure that we had.
We also want a heads up. We want time to do our research, too. We don't want to make a decision, you know, especially an important one like this, just off of a, you know, a quick email. We want to, we need time, too, you know? The, each department has their time to make their educated decisions. We want, we want to have the same benefit.
Absolutely, one hundred percent. And there's no reason to be anything except transparent. So, we know why it's coming through like this. We know that the permanent easement is coming through. The permanent easement will be a lot more complicated. Phase three will be a lot more complicated. This particular instance, we're requesting that the temporary right of entry be granted for a six-month period to allow these guys to get started and get in the ground. We know that it's within walking distance of the train station. We know that it's supporting business and employees living in South Norwalk. And we know that the developer is committed to making streetscape improvements and reconfiguring the entry on to Monroe. So, it's not cut and dry by any means, but there's no reason to dumb it down. But there's no reason to not be transparent. So, it's, in this particular case, I think that it's not, the, the request isn't as complicated as the permanent easement will be nor, nor phase three. So, I think that those pieces will deserve, well, everything deserves. I think.
Also, what's, what's very important is that this particular building will be seen by over fifty thousand people a day. That's one train stop that people from the north side or south side exiting or entering Norwalk is going to stop for two seconds, ten seconds and see this one building before they see anything else in Norwalk. So, this has to be something that has to be dealt with, you know, similarly. This is one out of two stops that people from New Haven all the way down to Manhattan is going to see on a daily basis. So, you know, Jessica, I know you have a wealth of knowledge. I know Darren's involved and you guys are all doing all you can. Just keep that in mind, too, not just the developer, but look at the city from the city's standpoint, now people perceive the city.
Do we usually get maybe like two or three hundred thousand dollars for these temporary easements? Or I just remember from past, some of the past things we've done, the numbers have been high. So, are we?
So, I think, yeah. So, I think the distinction between this is that, I think the distinction between this and what you're talking about, Nora, is that for the permanent easement, that's where those numbers would be coming in for, where you have a permanent easement where the developer would, you would have access across the site for egress and ingress. What we're.
I would think a permanent easement would be worth more. Who, are you doing the appraisal or are they doing the appraisal?
We've recommended the appraisal. We've, go ahead, Darren.
Yeah, Commissioner King, the appraisal is being worked on by Peter Vimmending. I don't know if the numbers have come in yet. I haven't received a report.
But he's your appraiser. Peter's yours.
Yeah, we always require the use of the city. Yeah, we, we always require the use of, of the city-owned appraiser and we require the developer to pay for the appraisal fee. And, you know, we want to know that we're getting the correct numbers and then we share the appraisal. And they may have comments, the development may have comments on, on it and want to point specific things out. And we certainly listen, but ultimately we're guided by our own appraiser. I just want to circle back just really quickly. This, this is, this is, we actually, it, it really wasn't dumbed down. It's actually a very, very simple, short agreement. It's, it's six pages in total, absent the insurance rider. Two and a half of those pages are, are what you would call general provisions like survival clause or representations or things of that nature. But really, the reality is, is the only thing that they're being given here is a, a, a very temporary in nature right to, so that they're not trespassing over city property. I think it was, it was commented earlier that, that, you know, they could leave their equipment on there. That's not how this was drafted. It's simply so they're not trespassing and because they're, they're so close to the corner of their property, they need to put fencing up to keep people out. And so they'll, they'll put fencing, but that will, that will sit on, on, on our property to a certain extent. But the intention is, it, it's really a very, very small piece of land and the use is, is extremely minimal. Or the impact of the use. And tru- truly, it's really, it's simply grants them that right that I just stated requires them to restore a, a very simple restoration right you would see in, in, in any sort of easement, basic easement.
Well, we were given the contract because someone mentioned in the email that they didn't want the contract sent to us. So is the temporary easement 30 days? Is it 60 days? Is it 90 days?
So it's, it's, um, it's, I, 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 I don't, I don't refer to it as an easement. I refer it as an access right. Because I, I look at it as analogous to a license instead of some even temporary construction easement. It's more permanent in nature. But the term of this is, is six months, which, but terminable without clause on 60 days' advance notice or 10 days upon material breach by either party. So they have a period of time, uh, but if, if for some reason the city decides something's not going correctly, it, it, it can, without any reason whatsoever for convenience, I guess you could put it another way, terminate the agreement, just has to give 60 days' advance notice. And that's really kind of between the, the very limited right being granted in the very small period of time they actually have a right to be on there without unilateral revocation or termination, or at least the right to do that, is, is where you really don't have much in the way of value here. And we, we have similar instances where there's land uses in the city that aren't valued. I'm thinking of, you know, things such as outdoor dining, where we have, it's, it's, there's a fee attached to it. It's more of an administrative fee. It's not valued in the sense of what's the economic value of, of, you know, a, you know, a business having outdoor dining and the revenue generated from that on city property. Conversely, there's many times that we have to ask residents to go on their property to, sometimes unfortunately easements haven't been secured by the city. Where there's, there's water mains and, not water mains, but water pipes and sanitary sewer lines and, or for example, on the water course project that's about to go forward in June, there's multiple properties in which we need our contractor to, to be able to access over their property, even put down a temporary gravel road over their property to access the water course. And in those instances, uh, we're asking the residents to, to allow that access without compensation. So.
When you mentioned residents, without conversation, you're talking about the Chestnut Street Codiment Association across the street?
No, I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking about, um, there's a, a, a dredging project in a water course, and no association to this at all. Over in the, Anthony knows more about it as far as the location. But there's flooding, there's a flooding issue and in order to get the contractor in there to, to dredge out the sediment, you need access from the road across private property or residential property to the water course. And I think, you know, we've required access rights similar to what we have here from, I don't know, 30 or 40 residents.
So with, with that being said, were there communications, Steve and Darren, to the adjacent property with the association across the street? Because a lot of the staging will be done in that, in that corner. I think Tammy tapped into it on Henry and Chestnut. Is that correct? Or?
There's no real affected property owners here.
Okay.
No, it's, it's really, it's really the city, you're, you're, you're on the side of the, of the railroad station. So it's, it's really just the city's property that abuts this property where the, where the, I, I, I have a hard time even calling it a use because it's so, it's a minimal impact.
I say that only because there's an elementary school across the street on Chestnut from 11 Chestnut, side by side. I'm looking at, on this, yeah, but I'm looking at just sound, you know, like sound during the day. These buildings are old, you know, they're old buildings and, um, I know, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure there's, you know, there's, there's much the city could do as far as restricting that. I mean, the construction's going to be the construction. It just happens to be under this scenario that, that the way they designed the building and the way it went through the planning and zoning process and the approval, that it's right up against our property.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not mentioning restrictions, Darren. I'm talking about just notifications. I'm not mentioning restrictions.
I'm not aware of any notifications. I'm sorry.
It's important to remember, as Jessica said, the city is getting 300,000 and odd, whatever the number that was, it was around 300,000 in streetscape improvements. As well as a, you know, obviously a huge addition to the grand list and a gateway to the city, which is right now a contractor yard. There's a warehouse and a parking lot, kind of a gravel parking lot right there where it says South Norwalk and a chain link fence. And it's kind of horrible to walk into South Norwalk right now and see that as your first impression of South Norwalk. So, um, I think whatever we can do, and I, and I, and again, I'll say, I've signed this kind of agreement for an adopted spot and nobody, there was, uh, and this was a requirement, legal requirement by the city. I also have an adopted spot at Martin Luther King in Washington Street, this Civil War statue. That's a half acre. And I had to sign this kind of agreement so that I can go onto that property and mow and maintain. I have a wildflower meadow there. I mow every week. And, um, and I maintain a half acre property, but I had to sign an agreement that basically gave me legal rights to trespass on the city property. And, uh, and, and be able to maintain a garden and an adopted spot. So this is a no-brainer. This is helping a developer who has a long track record in Norwalk of successful projects. And, uh, and I think this is a, a big addition, an important addition to the South Norwalk transit-oriented district as well as to the city as a whole.
We want to vote?
I agree, Mike, and it's purely, and it's purely a license.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, Nora, I suggest we vote.
Okay.
Yes, let's vote.
All right. So should I read the resolution?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Be it resolved by the Norwalk Planning Commission that the A24 referral made by the city's Economic Community Development Office for Mayor Rilling to enter into a temporary right of access and entry agreement over 30 Monroe Street be approved subject to the following reasons. To implement the Plan of Conservation and Development Goal to improve and maintain Norwalk's attractiveness as a business location and as a place to live for employees. To implement the Plan of Conservation and Development's action, continue implementation of transit-oriented development and arrange of mixed-use opportunities for sustainable lit work-play communities in the city. And to implement the third, to implement the Plan of Conservation and Development Goal to continue to encourage the development of vibrant transit-oriented districts within walking distance of South Norwalk, East Norwalk, Merrick Seven Train Station. Housing near transit is important for Norwalk's economic development and revitalization goals. Be it further resolved that notice of this action be forwarded to the Common Council.
Sure. I'll do roll call if you like. We had a second, correct?
I'll second it.
You have a motion? Who made the motion?
Okay.
No one made a motion. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll say it. Nobody else goes.
All right.
Okay, I'll do roll call from the top if that's okay.
Okay.
Mr. Baxendale in favor of the motion?
I approve. I favor, in favor.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Ms. Penniston?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Rocking and rolling.
Good discussion.
I know. It was good. It was, it was actually really good. I mean, I'm glad they're moving forward and I was getting, I, I've been getting nervous lately.
You were?
Now I'm getting nervous about some of the stuff that I'm hearing. So, um.
We are not going to build single-family homes and right next to the train station, ever. Can you imagine? They would have to go for $10 million apiece.
Some row houses, you know.
Completely unaffordable and, uh, this is affordable, anyway.
So anyway, um, all right. So we're going to move on. Thank you guys for coming. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it. And thanks for hearing us about the, about the project. We're excited about it too. So we think it's had a lot of value to South Norwalk and just, um, I think, Steve, you said it, right? Everybody who takes the train is going to stop there and be able to see what you have to offer. So we're really excited about the redevelopment that's happening there. And part of the P O C D speaks to, this project speaks to a lot of what the P O C D is pointing to for goals and objectives. So.
And this is your baby, Jessica. This is your baby.
Yeah, I've, I've always liked this project. I think it's, I think it's going to be really good-looking. But when you have the three months come up for the final easement, just give us enough notice so we can read it and everything.
Absolutely. Will do.
Permanent. Okay. And Steve, what do you want to do? You want to discuss? You're going to update the Norwalk River Valley Trail?
I think Mike Yosek is on the call. I saw him before.
He's up there.
I'm, I'm here, Steve.
All right, I see you. Floor is yours.
Oh, thank you. Basically, I, I just wanted to come back to you with an update. A few months ago, you approved the signing of a lease agreement with the, uh, with State DOT for a, a parking lot on the, uh, just north of Casatelli Tile on Riverside Drive. At the time, we did not have the Phase One survey done. We've gotten the results back about two weeks ago. Just wanted to update you on the results of that survey. Uh, it came back with a, a low, low risk. So, uh, right now, I, um, wanted to make you aware of that and, um, if you have any questions on that, I'm open to them.
Anyone?
I, I didn't quite hear Mike. I'm sorry. Maybe my audio went out. Say it again, Mike?
Mike, back to you. You're obviously in favor of this, right?
Yes, I think it came back with, with a low, low risk because, you know, basically think, uh, nobody's going to say that there's no risk to anything because, uh, you know, if you look at one spot there, you know, a foot away, there might be, might be something there. But we are doing all above groundwork. We are doing a, a, a parking lot. So there's not much excavation or anything. So I, I, I don't see a problem with it, but, uh, we, uh, Corporation Council wants to make sure that you're aware of this. And, and if you do have any questions or if you do want to reconsider, it's, you know, it's, it's your decision.
Yeah, just real quick, I see a lot of trucks for sale over there in that, in that area, Mike. A lot of trucks for sale. Are they from the houses across the street or are they just citizens just parking their vehicles to be sold?
Uh, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure where they're from. I know there were a lot of, uh, vehicles parked there over the years. I haven't noticed them myself, so I, I don't know where they're from. But we could take a look if you like us to.
No, no, I actually did already. No, they're, um, they're just, they have for sale and they have phone numbers. One is a, um, a, you know, five one six number. The other one says for emergencies, call the two oh three number. So I guess they're local citizens that park their trucks there for visibility. So if they're notified to leave, uh, move their vehicles, I, I don't think they, they wouldn't mind that their tires are not deflated where, you know, I guess they're, they're movable vehicles.
Steve, where are you referring to? Where are you referring to these cars being parked?
Oh, you were just muted, Steve. Still muted.
Yeah, on, on the other side of the Casatelli Marble Company on Riverside Drive.
Oh, okay.
Before you get to that Mexican lunch truck.
Yep, I know where you mean. Okay, thank you.
That's the same lot, correct, Mike? Are we on the same page?
Yes, that's correct. That's the area.
The other thing that Mike probably would mention is that 80% of any remediation cost if it is being incurred, which is unlikely, is paid for by a grant.
That, that's, that would, that would be correct.
Okay, well, should we move this forward? I think we're just having a discussion on it, right?
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to make any action on this.
I think we're just being educated. So we had three things that we had to be educated on tonight. This one, the TOD. So, or does anyone have any more questions for Mike or do you want to have, uh, move forward?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Who's going to do the TOD update?
I'll give you, I'll give you my overview. Things are going on well. We are basically coming to our next meeting, which should be the final meeting before the public view, uh, public input on the 18th. It just requires Steve to make sure he closes things down at that particular point. Steve, would you like to add anything else to the longer timescale?
Um, no, I, I gave the same presentation I showed you the, our last meeting I gave to Planning Committee of Council and also Zoning Commission last night. Yeah, we're hopeful that the 18th is the last meeting and we can, um, you know, digest all the comments from the various committee members and the consultant will go back and make edits. And then it'll probably be back in front of you next month in some form. And then we have to decide on the public approval process from that point on.
And the oversight committee is looking forward to all the good questions our fellow commissioners will ask, which I'm sure will be incisive and to the point.
All right, perfect. Good news. And what industrial zone study update?
Tammy, do you want to jump in? I start and I can jump in if you like.
No, that's okay. I've read the presentation from UTIL, but I, I don't have it in front of me. I left it at home and I'm at my office.
Yeah, so we have, um, we picked a consultant firm out of Boston that's going to do the work called UTIL. And we, they put a scope of work together. I'm going to, I haven't heard any negative comments back from anybody on the committee or any changes. So I'm going to get that back to them. And then we need to just get the contract approved. And so they'll start working hopefully in June. And that, it'll take about a year to get through.
Okay. Yeah, it's a long time. All right. Do we want to move on to the minutes? Does everybody have them? Did everybody review them?
Yep.
Yep.
So the minutes.
I have a correction.
Oh, you do? Okay, from the minutes from April 21st meeting. What do you have, Tam?
Um, if, if we're talking about the, um, the proposal for the, uh, hold on, I voted against and it said that I voted in favor. Wait, I'm trying to pull them up on the screen.
You're talking about the selling of the two parcels. Yes, you did vote against it. I remember that. Yep.
If that could be corrected, please.
Is Diana there?
Yeah, I think she's on the call.
Okay. Okay. I am. What page are you on? It's page three. No, wait. It's on page.
Page two, the, the motion to, yeah, the motion to approve the first item, A24.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks Diana.
All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right. You're good to go. Does anybody have any others? So we're canceled on the 19th. Does anybody have any other comments? Anything they want to bring up?
Yeah, just quick, you know, 10 seconds. Coco, Wall Street. What's going on? Anything new transpired with the city, Citibank?
No, nothing at the moment. There's still some, there's still talking, but there's nothing new to, to, to present.
Could, could Darren do something? Could Darren spark something? Send a letter or something? Or are we just waiting?
No, the, the city's been, the city's been just having discussions with them all along. I don't know if there's anything, excuse me, anything imminent or anything new to really report right now.
Is there any talk about us losing any of our movie theaters in this city? Have you heard anything?
Not that I've heard.
No.
No, I haven't heard anything specific about the movie theaters.
Okay.
And what, what about, on another note, what about the mall? What are we doing to help them? I mean, I, they've got to, they're going to need some sort of help, I, I'm thinking. So what, what's happening with them?
Yeah, so we talked to them. I talked to them yesterday and they have a re, a draft reopen plan. So they're going to share that. There's a meeting with the mayor tomorrow where they're going to share that plan. And I don't know the specifics of what that plan looks like, but I will know more tomorrow. So I did talk to them. They said that they were in good spirits or okay spirits and that they were looking at it from an wide approach that they have more than 50 of their outlets are open across the country. And they've been learning a lot about social distancing and a lot about how to open and what that looks like. And so they weren't prepared to share the plan when I talked to them yesterday, but they did say that they would, that they would speak to the mayor's office tomorrow morning about what their plan is.
I love that mall. So with those restaurants, are we going to be able to help them with like any leeway to go outside? Where are we going to be doing anything to like make history for them?
Yeah, so we, we, for restaurants in general, we put together a survey that went out earlier to understand who's looking for outdoor dining and what that looks like. And Steve's group's been really active in helping to be able to look at policies and recommendations and an application on how that could work and how that could work and the way it would work. So we know that the guidelines came through from the state on Saturday. We know that additional guidelines are going to come through. I believe this evening, there was a webinar this afternoon with David Lehman, the Commissioner of D C D at 2 o'clock to lay out some of what, what restaurants should be looking for. So I think at this point, what we're trying to do is understand how the city can support restaurants and getting open next week. And, but doing that through, through a procedure that's very clear and through a process that seeks, where the city approves what's going on so that we have some organization, some coordination for that. And that would apply to the mall restaurants as well.
Yes, I agree.
We're going to have to do stuff. I mean, it's, I mean, we have Everitos who just opened. They got the top. I mean, that's, I'm sure whoever, all that stuff is expensive for them to carry. I mean.
Absolutely. We've been in touch with, we've been talking to, we've been talking to every restaurant, but we've been talking to a lot of folks a couple of times a week and, and getting ideas and, and understanding what their needs are and, and what that should look like, what would work for them and what wouldn't work for them. So we're trying to supplement that with a survey that we just put out. But definitely want to be able to put out, we want to put out materials by the end of this week at the very latest to be able to give restaurants the, the information they need to be able to open.
Jessica, we consider doing anywhere in the town, in the city, closing any of the roads or making a much more pedestrian friendly, reducing cars. So also that we more of the sidewalk use for tableding, for example. West Washington Street comes to mind.
Yeah, so I think, to be perfectly honest, I think everything's sort of on the table at this point and thinking about how to be able to spur more, how to be able to support the restaurants and stores and do that in a meaningful way. So we've talked about all of those things, Brian. I think that they'll be solidified by the end of the week and what we think we can move forward. Part of that is coordination facilitation through D P W and police enforcement as well. So it takes a lot of logistical administrative coordination on the city side. But I can't speak to exactly what that looks like at this particular point in time. But by the end of the week, we will definitely be able to share more information.
Thanks Jessica.
The, the restaurant at the bottom level of the mall, that was never built to come outside though, right? It's all glass, but I don't think those doors open or anything, right?
Of course, I have a cafe. That was supposed to have a cafe. That restaurant was supposed to have seating out on the sidewalk in front of the mall.
How do you bring it out though? It looks like those windows are not movable. Can you bring that out Steve or no? Is it, once you're at those bottom restaurants, can you come out with them or no?
Are you talking about the Yard House?
The Yard House. Yeah. The one that's on the main level. Yeah.
Yeah, they have outdoor seating proposed that they always had.
Okay. All right.
And I just want to say, tequila is a great hand sanitizer.
I, I just, you know, I, I, it took so long to get Nordstrom's here.
Oh, I drive by the mall every day and it breaks my heart.
I literally almost started crying a couple of weeks ago. My, my daughter was like, what's wrong with you, mommy? And I'm like, I just wanted to go.
Ladies and gentlemen, did you guys hear that? Nordstrom closed 16 stores in America?
I know, I know. They've stayed, yeah, I've been on a lot of calls regarding some of those stores.
But does anybody else find it ironic though, that the mall, even though it's closed, all the lights are on all the time?
Yeah.
Why do they do that? Like they could save some serious money by just turning down the juice, like 50%, you know?
It's called visibility. They want visibility, you know?
Security maybe.
I, I think whatever we can do to help them, like we need, we need, we need to help. We need to help. We need to help the restaurants. We need to help the retail.
Especially on the pop businesses too. I mean, some of those are big chains, but I feel sorry for the old guys.
Yeah.
And honestly, Jessica, if these developers are coming and they need revisions and they need help to revise some of these things based on what's happening, I think we have to remember that we need to be pretty nimble. We've got to be nimble.
Very, thank you. Thank you.
I, I mean, things are changing.
Make sure you guys all, all order my pizza the next, next planning meeting, you know? Pay it back.
All right. So anything else or can we adjourn? Who, who's adjourned? I don't have anybody to my right or left.
Can we just, can we just formally send greetings to Fran?
Yes.
And send her best wishes?
I will.
Yes.
I mean, just for the record that we, we all send her best wishes.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Best wishes. It's very scary for her, for all of us.
Now, now I'll move that we adjourn.
No, good. All right.
I second that. Hi.
Hi guys. Hi Jessica. Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks. Be safe everyone.
All right.